Have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody here, so you know?
Yes, I have everybody.
Everybody's all documented?
Does everybody know everybody? Well, no. And online tonight, we have Eric Hall, Bob and Martha Shoneman, Keith and Deb.
Super. Any additions?
So yesterday, I sent out and Deb redistributed and updated agenda that had some additions on it. So if you wanted to take a second to look through it and make sure all looks well, but there have been no additions that I think need to be on here.
So I was wondering, since Eric is here to talk to us about the ARPA funds, I don't know if pre-requested is the right place for him or if we want it to be in old business when we talk about the grants and ARPA funds.
Actually, we could leave it where he is and that would get him out a little quicker since he's helping us out by...
He gives the... We're happy with that.
Okay, great.
I also thought maybe the, under new business, I had put the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and Transportation Council appointments under new business, but it seems like that would be appropriate to come up during the planning commission report.
Yeah, I actually addressed it in my report.
Yeah, so that can be moved there.
Other than that, we're all good, huh?
I think so.
Okay, approval of the minutes?
They look good to me. I'll move that we approve the minutes.
Okay. There, second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Pre-requested. Ashley Wade?
I'm here to file complaints about the paving job that's not on 133 at the D M B.
Uh huh.
Four hundred years old. I live right across from the town road.
Uh huh.
They left the pavement eight inches high at my driveway. I put a level on the edge of the shoulder and measured over it. It's eight inches high. I can't get my lawnmower up that slope. I can't get my forklift up to go to my property across the road. I thought they were coming back to fix it, but they put a little small apron on it. But that ain't enough when you raise a road eight inches.
Okay, so...
It needs to be fixed. I won't be able to plow my driveway. I won't give a plow to snow.
Okay.
Can take a bucket and dump it out the road, but that just won't make hard work.
Okay, so we'll have the... Can you look into that or somebody talk to Keith or see if we can get someone to remediate that issue?
Yeah, I'll just add that I also heard from Sue and Jeffrey Bork who live on that same road, and they messaged me on Facebook complaining about the same issue.
So this is not, okay, so there's a few instances that need to be addressed, so we'll have to...
Do they have a paved... Actually, your driveway is paved, right?
Mine is paved.
Right.
The town went long and put the gravel in and crushed gravel where they put the gravel driveway, but mine's not paved driveway.
So we need hot asphalt to put on yours now?
There's gravel.
Okay, that's a remedy.
But they just said it was too high. Yeah, they were complaining about how high was the gap to drive.
I tried to call Tommy Fuller a couple times, but I couldn't get through to anybody, so... Because I wanted to help. He was coming back to fix it.
So he is scheduled to come back and do some shimming in town. So I will see if I can catch up with him and bring that to his attention.
You know, a little taper, I think the taper I measured, I climbed eight inches, like nineteen or twenty inches. And that's really, really sharp.
Yeah.
Only way I could get over it with my forklift today was, or yesterday, I had to come on to it. I had a forty-five degree angle. Get one set of wheels up on the top, and then I could climb up on it. If I carry anything on the fork, I think it won't work.
Right, sure. We'll get ahold of him.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Eric Hall?
Eric?
Everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Quite loud, Eric. You're fine.
It's probably, it's...
All right. Well, thanks for having me here tonight. So I'm Eric Hall, regional planner at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. So the state's RPCs have been tasked with helping municipalities in our region with, you know, specific projects and management needs and expanding their ARPA funds. So at this time, you should have received half of the municipal funds that you will be getting through the American Rescue Plan Act. And so I'm here to help navigate the process from deciphering eligibility criteria, public involvement, and, you know, reporting and project prioritization. The final decision in how to spend the funds still lies with the municipalities, so, you know, with the select board. But now is the time for generating project ideas and determining eligibility. Now, the town of Politt is ahead of the game in a sense. You know, you've put together a survey, gotten some really good community input, and, you know, now are taking those survey results and kind of analyzing them, determining, you know, what may or may not be eligible, and, you know, really, the conversation starts in how to move forward from here. The goal to keep in mind with these funds and these projects is that they're to be used to meet pandemic response needs and rebuild a stronger, more equitable economy as the, you know, state and country recovers. You know, there are some general, you know, funding objectives to... You know, those include supporting the COVID-19 response efforts. One is replacing lost public sector revenue. I'll talk about that one a little bit more here in a minute. Supporting immediate economic stabilization and addressing this public health and economic challenges that have contributed to an unequal impact of the pandemic. So to go back to that, for policies lost public sector revenue, there's, you know, some very specific areas of eligible expenditures that these funds are to be used in. Those are outlined in the Treasury interim final rule. And to allow a little bit of flexibility, there's what's called the revenue loss calculation. And so that allows a town to plug their financial numbers in to this formula, and if it's determined that there is a loss of revenue, of revenue, you know, representing what could have been expected to occur in the absence of the pandemic, then funds up to that calculated amount can be used to support government services, you know, any provision of government services. So that calculation could give you some additional leeway in using these funds outside of the specific eligibility criteria. I will say that calculation is somewhat complicated. There are some revenue loss calculators available out there, but I actually just learned today that the Vermont Native Cities and Towns, in conjunction with Memric, a, you know, town accounting software or provider, have been working on putting together a calculator that is kind of centered around that platform. So that is expected to be released in the near future, and that will provide the opportunity to either in-house or potentially reaching out directly to Memric, getting that calculation, which will, you know, which will give you an idea of what, you know, amount of funds could be used for projects in any provision of government services. So, you know, with that, I think, like I said, the town is doing great so far at being proactive. Getting public input is important, you know, in determining the best way to use these funds to make lasting investments and also reach, you know, the greatest number of people in the community. The survey results, Jessica provided those results to me, and I was able to take a look at those and kind of go through, you know, where, you know, where that community stance fell. And I was able to look at, you know, what projects were, what projects came in near the top of the list as far as vote getters. You know, this is a good place to start, and I, you know, I would encourage additional discussion, you know, getting more public input. And, you know, I'll just emphasize, there is time. These funds need to be obligated by December 31st of 2024. And then they need to be spent by December 31st of 2026. So there is time. There's still a lot of questions out there. Like I said, Treasury has issued an interim final rule. That's the guidance on, you know, what projects are eligible. But it's an interim final rule, so, you know, they haven't released their final ruling yet. And there really isn't a definitive answer on when that is going to come out. So, you know, take your time. Make sure that, you know, you've gotten plenty of public involvement and make sure that, you know, you are confident in the direction that you wish to go with whatever project you choose. So, you know, that's kind of my general spiel here. I guess just a couple other things to point out. You know, general eligible project areas include supporting the public health response. So that could be funding mitigation efforts, behavioral healthcare, certain, you know, public half. Replacing public sector revenue loss. I touched on that with that revenue loss calculation. Addressing negative economic impacts. So responding to the economic harms caused by the pandemic to workers, families, small businesses, and impacted industries. So, you know, the industries that are highlighted include travel, tourism, and hospitality. In addition, funds can be used for premium pay for essential workers. And then there are three specific infrastructure areas: water, sewer, and broadband. You know, at this time, there aren't any additional infrastructure areas, but, you know, like I said, we still haven't received Treasury's final ruling. So, you know, it's not expected that areas of eligible expenditures are going to shrink, but you never know, they might expand. So, you know, making sure that you are able to leverage these funds as best possible. And, you know, that means seeing what else comes down the pipe, either, you know, through existing opportunities for grants or funding or new opportunities that are coming through the state and state agencies with the ARPA funds that the state has received. There's a lot developing in regards to thing or, you know, rental assistance or maybe some existing opportunities for small businesses. So, you know, having those directives, you know, is going to be important. And those are things that the RPCs and the Vermont Native Cities and Towns are working together to formulate and make accessible to the municipalities in our region. So, you know, with that, like I said, that's kind of my general overview. And, you know, I'd like to provide you the opportunity to ask questions and, you know, see where the conversation, you know, can go.
Did anybody have any questions from the board, or Eric at this point? Go ahead.
One question that came up on our survey was about cellphone service and a cellphone tower. And I wasn't sure if that fell under the umbrella of broadband. I know broadband is internet, but something that we struggle with in Politt is cellphone service or lack of, or nonexistent. So just wondering if that is something that might be able to be an eligible expenditure?
So offhand, you know, the lack of cell service accessibility was an issue that existed prior to the pandemic, correct?
Yes.
And so, you know, yes, it was probably amplified or, you know, noticed more when folks were either home more often. But in general, you know, it's...
I was basically thinking that...
To me, wouldn't fall into a response to the public health emergency. And specifically in regards to broadband category, you know, when we're talking about providing accessibility to internet or, you know, in this case, internet through data, you know, through the cell service, I don't know that it would meet the speed requirements that are also necessary through these guidelines. So that would be a tough one.
And what are the speed requirements?
That would be a tough one.
Is it 100 megabits per second up and down?
Yes. Yes, unless topographically or geographically, unless it's not feasible in one form or another. So, you know, if running fiber is a feasible option, then, you know, that would be the direction that for internet accessibility you would want to look at.
I had a question.
Go ahead.
I'm wondering, Eric, if you could talk a little bit about the ideas that ended up being top vote getters and about the sort of feasibility and how all of those would fit into the requirements?
Sure. So, you know, the top vote getters, you know, we're looking at a wastewater plant in West Politt, broadband, and stormwater projects, as well as, you know, the cell tower was on there.
Well, the cell tower was in...
And see what else was on there?
The cell tower was in comments. That came up in comments. The other...
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, the other, among the top vote getters, the other one you didn't mention so far was the digitizing of town records.
Yep, so digitizing town records. So I'm going to start there. Digitizing town records, especially land records, you know, those are looking like eligible uses across the board. There's, you know, a need to access those records. And clearly, you know, when we're in a pandemic and, you know, offices are closed or, you know, you're limited to one person at a time, having to be socially distanced, you know, that's just not a feasible approach to, you know, accessing those records. So digitizing records is, you know, is an eligible category. Just kind of worked my way up my list here. So broadband, you know, if funds are transferred to the C U V, then in this case with these funds, the town still is required to report on those projects and, you know, ensure that those projects are adhering to the eligibility guidelines. So, you know, the goal with broadband is delivering minimum speeds of 100 upload and download, 100 megabits per second upload and download. You know, in cases, like I mentioned, in cases where it's impractical due to, you know, geographical or, you know, the lay of land, you must at least deliver 100 megabits per second download speed and at least 20 megabits per second upload speed. And so, you know, these projects, they need to be designed to serve the currently unserved or underserved households and businesses. And that's defined as not currently served by a wire line connection that, you know, with current speeds of 25 download and three upload. So, you know, obviously, the topic of broadband is, you know, very prominent these days. And with that in mind, you know, like I said earlier, leveraging your funds is important. So, you know, there may be some broadband funds that are coming through the state or other, you know, federal funds that may filter right through to your C U V. So, you know, definitely broadband is important. You know, I recognize that in my town. I'm working out of a Verizon hotspot right now. So, you know, across the state, this is a big issue. And so definitely keeping it near the top of the priority list is important, but also seeing what else comes down the pipe is going to allow you to, you know, get the biggest bang for your buck in that sense. Onto the next piece, unless anybody has any questions on that.
Frank?
So three megabits download or DSL speeds, that is allowed to be or not allowed to be?
No, that's so... The definition of unserved or, so the definition of underserved is the connection that delivers... Underserved, sorry, is a connection that does not currently deliver at least 25 megabits per second download speed and three megabits per second of upload speed.
So basically, all of West Politt is...
So if you're...
So it's less than?
Yeah.
Most rule there?
Less than, yep.
All right.
Yeah, what have you got in West Politt, Frank?
Well, you have Comcast, and it's fast.
How fast is it? About three megabits per second?
Well, that's the phone company.
Yeah.
And the TV thing goes 100 or more, up and down. But the second question is, since Treasury is still finalizing the rules, then is the recommendation to hold tight until those are finalized? And if so, when do you expect those to be finalized?
Yeah, you know, it's... Like, it's tough when you've got the money in hand not to want to jump into doing projects. And so, you know, with that in mind, the final rule is expected sometime this fall, maybe, but, you know, that's still not a definite. And so with that, you know, taking your time, seeing what other, you know, public idea might come up and also seeing what other funding opportunities filter down through, you know, is going to be a way to allow you to maximize, you know, the use of these funds. So, yeah, you know, if you can, hold tight, you know, until we have final guidance, then, you know, it's a good approach to take.
So is there anything else that anybody wants to ask Eric? Think that...
So I can keep working up through the...
I think that...
The top vote getters here.
I think we are running out of our...
A lot.
A lot of agenda time for this, but I guess that's all I have to say.
So I can wrap it up. I can wrap it up real quick. You know, just to touch briefly on, you know, the West Politt wastewater plant, you know, water and wastewater are eligible infrastructure expenditure categories. You know, they do need to, you know, categories of projects that would be eligible to receive assistance through EPA's Clean Water State Revolving Fund or Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Those direct the eligibility of these ARPA available projects. So, you know, eligible projects including treatment and transmission and distribution or, you know, construction of publicly owned treatment works or, you know, upgrades or expansions. Those are projects that, you know, these funds would support. You know, so it seems like that's a high priority in town. You know, I would be interested to kind of get a little more information on what potential plan, you know, there might be for that. And then we could look at that more closely in regards to these eligibility criteria. But, you know, that is an eligible area, and I would just say, you know, the more details you can provide, the more information I or Vermont Native Cities and Towns can get back to you in regards to, you know, how those potential projects would fall into the eligibility criteria. And then just the last piece, you know, stormwater projects. This is one that, you know, projects that fall under the Clean Water State Revolving and Drinking Water State Revolving Funds. For example, projects that, you know, are part of your municipal roads' general permit are looking to be eligible projects. So MRGP projects could be a potential way to spend some of these ARPA funds. So with that, I would say, you know, please feel free to reach out with any additional questions. You know, it doesn't hurt to have another public meeting specifically dedicated to ARPA and, you know, just keep the conversation going.
Yeah, I've got a question in regards to a stormwater project we've got in West Politt. We've got a great idea or a plan for what needs to happen. Does that project need to be engineered in order to receive the funds before we start the project? As far as where to put the DIs and what size pipe and that sort of thing?
If the project needs to be engineered, you know, whether or not the funds will be coming from ARPA or somewhere else, you know, directly through the town budget, would the project need to be engineered? would the project need to be engineered anyway?
No.
Okay, so, you know, as long as it's a project that complies with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund or Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, then, you know, if you're adhering to eligibility criteria in those regards, then it's apparent that ARPA funds are eligible for those such projects.
So should we run this project by you to make sure it's eligible before we do it? Or do it and then submit it?
No, it wouldn't hurt to run it by, you know, present it to either myself or, you know, even EPA. Say, you know, if you have a representative that you work with through EPA on, you know, typical projects like this, say, hey, would this fall into, you know, the criteria of eligibility for, you know, for these, you know, to meet our MRGP? Then, you know, if it falls into those criteria, then it's looking like it is ARPA eligible. But definitely, you know, doing the homework to, you know, make sure that the projects are, that there's no gray area in the answer, that you can get a definitive yep. It falls into this area, this category, meets these standards, and then so therefore can be used for ARPA. Can be, ARPA funds can be used for it. You know, that's going to be the approach. Doesn't hurt to check and then get a second opinion even in this case.
So in this case, we could submit a drawing to you and you could say, yes, it's eligible or no, it's not?
I can, well, I can either provide, you know, my interpretation of the guidance. But in regards to, I'm not an expert on, you know, EPA standards. So like I said, it would probably be most efficient to present the project's details to, you know, to an EPA representative. Or you could send it to me. I could talk with Stephanie who's, you know, Stephanie and Devin who, you know, work on our MRGP program. And then we could, you know, kind of run it up the chain and make sure that it falls under, you know, eligible criteria.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
This would be a question around the state is whether or not the funds could be used to develop municipal solar to benefit the towns and citizens in the towns.
Yeah, there's, that's come up in a couple cases. You know, that kind of would fall into a more general infrastructure build. And so, you know, with, looking at it from that perspective, it really wouldn't be an ARPA eligible project. You know, one example that was kind of discussed is if you were to put a solar array on a wastewater treatment facility that offset the utility costs of that facility and therefore reduce rates to its users, you know, that can be a potential way to look at, you know, solar. But in general, you know, freestanding solar arrays that just offset, you know, town utilities and that sort of thing don't look to be falling under ARPA eligible expenditure categories.
Well, thank you very much for joining us tonight, Eric. We appreciate all the input you've given us.
You're welcome.
Continued support and stuff like that. And we'll be reaching out to you with some of these questions that we've had tonight. Have a good evening.
Very good, thank you. You too, take care.
Any announcements tonight?
No.
Nothing, okay. Zoning administrators report.
So since the last meeting was here, there's been one new permit approved by the zoning board adjustment. That was for a catering facility, catering business. That was two weeks ago, I remember the date. But in any event, let's see. I have an application pending for a new home. The DRB met last night to just, to hear the appeal by Mike Wesco on permit 2006-05. So the DRB has 45 days to issue a decision, which shouldn't take that long. It doesn't normally take that long. However, they will be waiting for additional pictures from Mr. Wesco to the DRB. And so I'm not sure when the clock starts ticking, starts ticking after the evidence has been received or...
Meeting.
Or the meeting, I'm not clear on that one. Let's see, so there was, at the last board, select board meeting, there was permit 2008-01 that Mr. Wesco presented you a letter. And the letter asked basically if that permit was vowed. So I had conversations with Merrill Bent, the town attorney, since it was a legal question. She provided some highlights. And one of the highlights is that the select board does not issue opinions or decisions on zoning matters. So she stated that the, if Mr. Wesco wants a decision, that he should address that letter to the, that question to the zoning administrator for a decision. And then if he's not happy with that decision, he can appeal that decision to the development review board. The other question, the other issue could be, or may be, was that the appeal period has expired of back in 2008. So I guess the, where we go from here? Where does, the board doesn't address any of those issues, the zoning issues. So Mr. Wesco can appeal that question to myself if he likes. And if he doesn't like that decision, he can appeal my decision to the development review board and have another hearing. Anybody have any questions?
Mike?
I thought we went over all that at the last meeting.
And that's what we've determined after quite a lot of conversations with the lawyer, that that's the system that's in place and that's how you will need to address him in writing for a decision. And then it goes the next step.
Directly to Mr. Wesco.
To the zoning administrator.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions for the zoning administrator?
Thank you for joining us tonight. Planning commission report?
Yes, so I submitted my report in writing and I'll give it here as well. So we met last Monday and talked about, one thing was Tom Collard's resignation. So John Sabatka has volunteered to be the permanent representative to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and the Transportation Advisory Committee. And therefore, we would ask the select board to, the select board would need to actually make that appointment because he's currently the alternate, but he would like to be the, well, he's volunteered to be the permanent.
I did volunteer.
He did volunteer. At this time, no one else on the planning commission is interested in being an alternate for any of the three positions. So we tabled selecting alternates until we have a new commissioner or commissioners. We also continued our work on updating unified bylaws. Jonas suggested some language to be added to each of the zoning districts that would allow the DRB to consider other uses that are very similar to the already allowed uses. And the planning commission thought this was a good idea and we put that in our ongoing draft. Another issue that came up, which was brought by a resident, was that nowhere in our zoning bylaws do we address wedding venues at all. They're not either permitted or conditional use. So the commission agreed that that is, wedding venues are something that would add value to the local economy. And we would like to add those to the appropriate zones, though we need to consider exactly what kind of language to use as wedding venues also might hold graduations and other events. The planning commission also discussed a bunch of the current and upcoming grant opportunities. And it expressed its support for the VORev, outdoor recreation communities grant that we're currently looking to get. And also for the municipal planning grant for a master plan for West Pollet Village. The planning commission also supports applying for the bylaw modernization grant, which is this year only. And it would very much speed up our current work on updating the bylaws. This grant is specifically meant for bylaw updates that will address the current housing crisis which we have in the state by improving affordable housing and pedestrian-friendly communities, which of course would also have a positive economic impact on our town. The bylaw modernization grant, just like the municipal planning grant, is for a maximum of $25,000. I don't know if we'd be asking for that whole amount or not, with a 10% municipal match. So the planning commission is asking the select board to adopt the fiscal year 22 municipal resolution for bylaw modernization. So I guess the planning commission has two asks for the select board tonight. One is to officially appoint Mr. Sabatka to those two things. And the other is that the planning commission would like to apply for this bylaw modernization grant but would need a resolution from the select board.
Anybody have any questions for Jessica? Anybody want to make a motion that we appoint John Sabatka to the...
I'll make the motion.
To the Rutland Regional...
I'll second that.
So it's to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and the Rutland Regional Transportation? I always get the A wrong.
Advisory Committee.
I always want to call it the Alternatives Council.
Yes. I mix that one up a lot.
Sounds official and great. But anyway, okay, that's what the motion is for. So Bob Jones and Rich Hewitt.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, carried. Thank you, John, for picking up.
One thing that's got to take place is the, someone's got to contact, I can't think, the guy's name, Devon, I think it's named.
Devon, yep.
And have all the information that's been going to Tom forward it on to me.
I got that covered.
You got it, very good.
I'm going to need your, some personal, your address, nothing too crazy, but just a couple things to fill out these forms and then I'll send them right back along and then your information will be updated.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Now on to the grant. Planning commission.
The resolution for the bylaw modernization. This one is a little, if we decide to do this, it's a little less complicated than the one I asked for us for last time. We don't have to have an alternate and everything. We just have to have a grant administrator, which I would be willing to do unless, would you be willing to be a grant administrator for one of the grants, Kristin?
I could, yes. Yes, I could.
I'm already administering two.
I would love to.
And then we would need a signatory. And this time, we don't need an alternate signatory. So it would just be, could be me as well. And again, there is the 10% municipal match for this one as well.
So that would, the maximum that could cost is $2,500?
The max would be $2,500, yes.
Is that the entire motion in one? I'll make that motion.
To make that motion to apply for the FY '22 municipal resolution for bylaw modernization.
Yeah.
That's mouthful.
It is, but it'll be very helpful.
And will you just communicate with me what my, you don't have to do it right now, but at some point, we can get together and just talk about what my...
I'll second that motion.
There any more discussion about this?
I would just, one thing is that the match money could come out of the zoning administrator's budget.
Okay.
I have two accounts there.
Excellent, great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, carried.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Does this one need everybody to sign it? It does not. I just need the legislative body chair here. So that would be for you right there. Thank you. Hopefully, we can get that. It's this year only and that would really streamline the work that we're doing. That's it for our questions.
Road Foreman's report. Does Keith have anything to add or are we going to let Rich do the talking?
So I talked with him briefly today. Couple of things there. So the town crew has been grading the dirt roads. And a couple of other things, I'm assuming this applies for this. In regards to the stormwater project, I have talked to three different contractors for the first phases, one of them being at your place. Expect you to have prices back before the meeting. Didn't get any, but a couple of them are pretty confident they could get it done before freeze, freeze up. So we'll keep, we'll see if I can get some prices from them before the end of the week. We'll take a look at that and hopefully get the first phases in. Then you can get your part finished.
Good. Anything else going on? Yes.
There was an email that came through from Caroline Masa from the state hazard mitigation, she's a state hazard mitigation planner for Vermont Emergency Management. And it's for the, oh, sorry, wrong section. I thought it was for roads, but it's not. It's for Bob. Sorry, false alarm.
Any other questions? Keith joined us tonight.
Yes, Keith's iPad is logged in.
Very, very happy to hear that he's back working part-time until he hit 100%. We're very glad his recovery is going well.
I do have one question from Bruce. In regards to the running the pipe between those two buildings, you've got the building closest to the tracks. You've got a walkout door on that one building. So in order for us to get through there with a machine, we're going to have to fill that in. And I don't know if you want to, if you want to put a drain into the river in the meantime to drain that hole out?
Yeah, I talked to Keith about that earlier in the summer and that was the plan, put a drain in there and try and fill it in. If you need that dig it out, put a drain in.
We'll just backfill everything to the same level, leave a hole right there so you can get in and out and just put a drain in it.
Yep.
Because we're going to have to, to get through there, we're going to have to fill it initially.
Right, yeah, it's fine. It was filled at one point and dug it out.
Okay, perfect.
No other questions, okay? Assessors report. Nothing from the assessors tonight. It says resident correspondence.
Oh, is that where the...
Yes, that's the letter.
The letter that I sent around. So this would be in response to Ms. Beriz, who was one of the people who grieved her taxes and had written a letter to the select board, even though it really is the assessors and the BCA that had authority there. And so the assessors and the town treasurer took it on themselves to come up with some points to send back to her, just basically laying out the factual information about how the process goes and what her next steps would be if she wishes to continue the process. And I sent that around to everybody. And the question is, would the select board like to send out this letter to her? I mean, I feel, personally feel that we should send something because she, hasn't she contacted the select board more than once now?
Yes.
Yes, so I think that sending some... Yes, so I think that sending some sort of official response with this factual information would be good in the interest of communication.
Let's just...
I'll make that motion if you need one.
That would be great.
Sure, I'll second it.
Second it. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
All right, so Kristin, are you able to get that letter sent out then, or should Julie do it?
It would be great. I won't, I'm in Manchester for the next 40 hours during the work week, so if Julie could do it, that would be great.
I will see if she can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Town Clerk's memo?
Um, sorry, one sec. Who seconded that motion?
Uh, that was...
Deb is here this evening. You're up.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Not much from my office. There is one permit that needs a signature, the overweight permit. I have had this week already a couple of calls with regard to welfare checks on people, and they've been forwarded on to Jennifer Sullivan to work in tandem with the school. And the other, the other welfare check, I got a call from the fellow today, and he did hear from the person he was concerned about, so we're all set there. The petitions for the elections coming up, the articles and the nomination petitions will need signatures. That all of the, all of the legislation that was put in place for COVID expires at the end of this year, except our new legislation was put in place to continue with some of the protocol that was put in place for elections and the election days and early balloting, et cetera. But there will need to be signatures on petitions this year. And other than that, I don't have anything to add unless somebody has any questions.
I think that we're all set. I've been in touch with Jennifer too about the one situation, so we've talked about some options, and we're going to continue on that, so thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
And I guess that's it. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thanks, Deb.
Have a good evening.
You're welcome. You too.
Town Treasurer's memo. Julie doing enough tonight?
Julie's not here this evening.
Would you mind reading that, please?
I can be her proxy. There are Treasurer's memo this week, there are two warrants this week. The payroll for this period was $6,815.21. Accounts payable was $29,606.75. General fund monies, $21,329.14. Highway, $6,492.62. Wastewater, $8,600.20. Mike, please sign the auditor representation letter respectfully submitted. Julie, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions on anything?
Well, I'll move that we approve the warrants.
Okay. I'll second that. Any more discussion on the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Auditor representation. So, this, this letter is for the same company budget, Janet Crower and Weisner, P., Public Accountant, that we've been using right along, and it just basically says, connection with the auditor fiscal statement to the Pollet. They just say that they've done the best they can, to the best of their abilities. Anybody want to read this before I sign it, or?
I'm fine.
All good. Thank you. Okay, so the warrants at the...two warrants to be signed. Must be the new...Lindsay Barnes is the new librarian. Lindsay Barnes is the new librarian, apparently.
Wonderful. Welcome, Lindsay Barnes.
I should send them, too. Sign them both, and then send them down. That's that one. Oh, yeah. Lot of theirs. Everybody got, everybody got these copies of our budgets to look over so we can fill in the blanks at the next meeting.
I have those.
It's a place I would go through with that.
I have a question for the board about that. So, the warning was sent out for the special meeting next Tuesday for the budget meeting. Next Tuesday, Bob, budget meeting, 7:00 PM. Be there or don't, but hopefully you will. So, would...
We'll come get you, we know where you're at.
Would you all like, for me, last year I think Julie did this, but would you all like for us, Julie and I maybe, to put out a reminder to the different offices to say if they have any budgetary requests, to get those submitted to you all in writing? When would you like those by? Monday?
If they could pull it off...
Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's only going to speed the process. The quicker they get them to us, the speedier the process goes.
Yeah. Luckily, I was looking through my email history, and last year we, Julie and I had this back and forth of like, do you think we got everybody? So, we finally, I think we have a pretty solid list.
Super.
So, it should be pretty easy, okay. And just for public awareness, that it's a special meeting, the public is of course welcome to attend. It's an in-person meeting and online. There is more limited opportunity for public comment in that meeting, just because it's an opportunity primarily for the Select Board to get a grip on what the budget is, but due to the nature of the open meeting law, the public is of course welcome to be present, and there is time allotted for public comment.
At the very end of the meeting.
At the very end of the meeting.
There'll be no interruptions while we're going through this.
Yeah, so just, just to set the expectations.
Bring your notebooks if you've got questions.
Yeah, yeah. It's easy just to run through it all and then making little notes, and then at the end, if anybody has questions, there will be opportunity for that.
Emergency management, anything on that?
Yep, so Bob Morleano submitted a report from October. A test was performed of the Town of Pollet's emergency notification system on October 26 through the State of Vermont VT Alert System. Over 300, over 1,300 contacts were made by either landline, cellphone, text, or email. So, I know I got a call, so that was...
I got one.
If you didn't get any sort of communication, I would recommend reaching out to Bob Morleano. He's our emergency management director, and you can get your preferred method of contact on his radar, so.
Great. Yeah, I was very impressed with that system. It's...
Yeah, it's pretty, it was good.
It's going to be very valuable in the event.
Yeah, hopefully we don't need it.
It's never, never necessary, but...
Yeah. Another good step in our communication, though.
Did we get any report from Jennifer?
Nothing other than the correspondences we've been having with her, no formal report, and she is not here this evening, so.
Okay. Wastewater, I think the only thing that I found is that there's a lot of water going into the Spruce Gun Pump Station. We're assuming that people are pumping their basements into the wastewater, so it's putting a big load on that. It's actually making a little bit of the, the stormwater run out out of one. I think that bleeder is seeping a little bit down in the village, so if you see a little bit of water around there, it's from all the extra rainwater that's getting in the system, is pushing out there. But other than that, everything seems to be running all right there. They've been doing some jetting and stuff, and Keith's found a lot in the manhole, so they're, they're doing well with that project. Not all of them are going to be able to be elevated to the road level this year, but they've been found, they've been opened, and they've been patched. So, they're, they're not hiding, but they're not as good as they're going to be. Some of them will have risers put on, but risers are so far out that it won't be able to happen this year. And that's about all I got. Older unfinished business, building maintenance. Ashley left already.
Yeah, so, so I did make contact with Ashley, and he is going to patch those steps for this winter with some type of epoxy. I don't know if he has, I haven't been over to the library to see if he's done it or hasn't done it. I was going to talk with him.
I don't think so.
Not yet.
He plans to.
At faraway glance, they look...
Well, it's done nothing but rain ever since I talked with him, so...
Right, yeah.
If we get a nice, warm, sunny day, I'm sure he'll be, he'll be over here to patch those steps, and then that'll buy us some time to figure out, you know, the best approach moving forward with, you know, what we're going to do to repair them, or rebuild them, whatever we decide is best.
I did share with you that vendor endorsed it.
And I had contacted them...
You had, nice.
The week before.
Cool, sweet. We were on the same page. So, yeah, there was just somebody who, when we come time to maybe doing a grander project, they could be potential, or they were not somebody that was interested. Okay, never mind, scratch it.
Couldn't talk him into it, no? No.
Good try, though.
So, if anybody's trying to become a stonemason, now might be the time.
Yeah.
Big projects on the horizon. Okay.
All right. Mike, do you have some?
Actually, I'm going to use this opportunity to follow up with Jonas, because I have a question for you, Jonas.
It has to go, you have to ask it, and then Jonas will answer it, so...
I may have already requested the information that he's asking me to re-request, so I just want to make sure that I'm certain what I'm requesting would sound silly. Back in January of this year, I did send a email quoting, "As per our phone conversation yesterday, I am requesting written confirmation of conditional use permit 2008-01." I sent that on the 14th. I did not get a response. I sent another email on the 25th of January stating, "I did send an earlier email on 11421 requesting a formal statement concerning the permit in question." I haven't heard back, so I want to make sure you did receive that. He responded that day. That'll get back to me in two more days, which would then be the 27th. His answer was, "The permit you have requested is not located in the 2008 permit file." So, I don't know if that constitutes what I'm supposed to re-ask now.
Jonas?
Well, I believe you're asking me to find out. I've got all that information, all those emails, and I've located the permit through Jonas' trash.
But not through the town?
Exactly.
All right, that's not the question, though. The question is, did I already satisfy your requirement? Can I speak to him directly, Mike?
You know...
Okay, so you're looking to find out if you satisfied his requirement for a decision. So, you're looking for a written decision from Jonas regarding this permit.
Yeah, all I need to know is if I've already done it, I don't have to do it again, but if I...
No, you do have to do it, because you...
All right.
Because all, all that...
So, I could take what I gave to the Select Board and just change the title and give it to you then?
Exactly.
Okay, that's easy enough to do.
All those documents that I was not able to locate, and I, I'm sure that I told you that I could not locate those documents.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just double-checking the question.
So, I think we have that clear now, how the system is.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
And that permit, if I could just add one more thing, that permit is located, which surprised me, is located on the Act 250 website. I'm surprised.
I did indicate that to you when I dropped the information off at the front door, but you may not have heard that. That's okay.
New business. The appointments we already did to John Sabatka, and anything else?
I was just, I did have, probably under old business, which I didn't type up for, was the updates on the grants that we've been working on. We got Amanda from Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and I got the municipal planning grant submitted by the deadline, so that's, that's in there. Regarding that ground field study, the gentleman, let's see, I've got his card here, by name of Jeremy Roberts, came out to look at the property, the town-owned property in West Pollet. He came out yesterday, and he and I walked around the property, and he looked at stuff, and he took some photographs. He did have a request. He was wondering if there's anyone he can talk to, and I said I'd ask the Select Board, because you might know better than me, who knows more about the history of the property, like back when it was Dutchies, like what kind of heating it used, if they ever sold fuel, things like that. Who would be the best person? Because I gave him the information that I had about it right now and about the date when it burned down, but I didn't have any information about the use of the property before that.
They never sold fuel there. They sold ice cream before it was Dutchies. Dutchy, Dutchy sold ice cream.
Uh-huh.
Fire crack.
Opane tanks, fuel.
But they did, there was never any...
You used to go in the back and play slot machines for fun, too. That was the day. I don't remember any fuel sales. The only way to head is their own domestic use fuel.
Yeah. And who, would anyone know what kind of, was that fuel oil?
That would have been, I would imagine, Ryan Kurjack.
Probably with coal, that cheapskate.
Coal, is he?
I, I don't know. They used to burn some coal. I'd have to ask Walt.
But yeah, is there, is there anyone that he could talk to to get that information?
Walt Kurjack.
Probably Walt Kurjack would be...
Can someone get me this person?
I can, I can get...
Can you send me the contact info?
Yeah.
And I can pass it on to him, yeah. Because he's just kind of doing a, he also did the official search in the town records for, you know, the previous owners and everything, but he would like to...
Every, the previous owners are just, or that ran the story of Kurjacks that, they're both deceased, but their son lives in Timmets, and he...
Okay, yeah, I can, I can then pass that on to him. And let's see, was there anything else about the grants? Oh, um, which, regarding the ARPA funds, I did speak to Hillary Solomon from the Polton Meadowwee Conservation District, and she can attend the Select Board on November the 30th. So, she can come, because she would talk to us about the stormwater projects. I spoke to her today on the phone, and she said that they do still have 10 projects that they already identified in the past based in the Flower Brook Watership. However, they hadn't identified any projects in West Pollet, in the Indian River Watership, because they didn't get previous grant funding for that. She did suggest that there is a, there is a Lake Champlain Basin Technical Proposal Grant... Grant, which, it's one of those ones where you put in a letter of interest and then if they like it, they let you put in the full application later. And this, she did put in for us, like, a stormwater scoping study, she did one a couple years ago for Castleton, I guess, and it would be possible, she'd be up for putting in a letter of interest for us for a, like, stormwater scoping study for West Pollet. I mean, the idea behind that would be that they would figure out, like, in the, I mean, obviously, we're doing some stuff already for stormwater, but that would be to figure out in the grand scheme of things, you know, what we can do. As I've been thinking about that little project we're doing on the property where that, the one where we're going to cut away the bank, right?
The trailer.
Yeah, yeah, and this might identify other places where similar projects might help decrease the standing water that people are seeing. And, so anyhow, it is luckily one of those grants with no match. If we wanted her to put in the LOI, she would graciously put it in even though it's due November 8th.
Okay.
I don't know if this is something we'd want her to try to do, but, yeah.
It seemed like if she, if they could, we could get a grant to identify this to do more engineering work on the front side than the burden being on us, it would make sense.
I mean, it seems kind of like a win-win to me.
Frank?
Yeah, the study of the Indian River back at By Angeles and, you know, back in there, Framers Little property up through there, it's all over the place, it's eroding and it's taking nutrients and taking away the topsoil and stuff, and that would be looked at because Lake Champlain is, that group is very interested in, now my source pollution and stuff, and the erosion problem and the nutrients from the farmland and all that stuff flowing down and ultimately through Meadowwee and into Lake Champlain. So, if you angled it that way, you may have a better chance of getting their eye on it.
Yeah, she did say that this doesn't quite fit their major goals for this year, but that, so, it's not, it's not necessarily a guaranteed thing, but it wouldn't hurt to give it a try. And she did, from this same source, she did get the money a couple years ago for the study in Castleton, she said, so.
It's very muddy and still the Indian River there.
Do you see any reason why we wouldn't want to go for that?
No, I guess. I guess we just, we don't want to hold up what we've already got started in West Pollet.
Right.
Oh, no, we wouldn't. I think that, I agree, I think we'd want to go with what we're doing already and that this might identify for us for the, if we get it, it might identify for us for the future, other spots where we could do, like, stream bank mitigation or stuff further upstream to keep it from washing down, kind of thing.
Yeah, I think that definitely the project in the village has to go, you know, sooner than later. That was how to go right on.
But this might identify more projects for the future.
But that could be beneficial to other areas that are...
So, the engineering would be free, essentially?
Yeah, if we got it.
And then we could apply the grant funds to those stormwater projects.
Yeah, exactly. Also, what she told me, and she'll probably tell us more on November 30th, is that a lot more money is coming down the pipe for stormwater. So, Potney Meadowwee is getting a lot of money that they're going to have to use for our district for stormwater mitigation. So, us knowing what kind of projects that we could do would be great for that. So, we may not end up wanting to use our ARPA funds for that if a lot of other funding is available, like how Eric was saying. So, anyhow, that's, yeah, she'll give us more details on November 30th, but she wanted to let us know about this, about this opportunity that has the immediate deadline.
Good. Seems...
But my understanding is, they're not, so, whatever grant we get in regards to that, they're not going to go back on the projects we've already done. But the ARPA funds could.
I think, yeah, the ARPA funds, from my understanding of it, is that they can back date to March of this year. So, if the projects that we've done are fit the criteria like that Eric was talking about, you know, that they would be covered by the Clean Water Revolving Fund or the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, those criteria that he was talking about.
So, what I need to do is get a drawing to him, so I need his contact information.
Sure.
And then I need to get an answer from him right away.
Yeah, I can, yeah. And honestly, my personal feeling is that we should just go ahead with some of these projects and then if we can use the ARPA funds for it, great, but we kind of need to do the projects anyhow. I mean, that's your feeling, right?
Yeah, yeah, but if we can get a drawing to him right away, get him on the hook.
Yeah, I will send you, I will email you his email.
But we'll keep moving forward with the process to get prices and all that stuff, so hopefully between, he'll have an answer and maybe before the next meeting even, we'll have some information on a viable contractor and stuff to...
Okay. Two to three that we had talked to are very confident they can get it done in the next two to three weeks.
Okay, and that should put us, especially looking at the long range, it looks like should put us in favorable weather conditions still, so.
This thing you were talking about on the 30th generally is a year or two out type of thing, so it's not even going to collide with any of the other stuff.
Okay, great.
Including potentially you getting something done in Spruce Gun with this statement.
Okay, good, thank you. So, somebody want to make a motion so that we have her?
Yeah, I can make it because, so, I move that we ask Hillary Solomon to submit a letter of interest for the Lake Champlain Basin Technical Proposal.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
All right, I'll let her know tomorrow morning and she, yeah, she says she can pretty much copy very similarly the one that she did a couple years ago, it's got a lot of the same info.
Good.
Thank you.
Do you have any more mail from the select board, so?
Yep, I've got it.
Hillary Solomon is of the ANR, right?
She's with Potney Meadowwee Conservation District.
I have something new, Mike, when...
Go ahead, I'm trying to send Jessica that contact.
Okay, and I'm trying to send Mitch that contact. It's fine, though.
You send your contacts and then I'll go.
It doesn't want to.
Yeah, I'll do it.
I'm supposed to be focused on meetings.
Yeah, this is not what we're doing now.
I'll get it to you.
So, Deb forwarded something along to me, it's an opportunity for another grant from Greenup Vermont, and they, Greenup Vermont is facilitating a grant program for water bottle filling stations, and it's a unit that can be installed into a building, it's like a wall-mounted unit, and it helps to, it's an LK water refill station and up to $1,000 towards installation costs. And so, basically, what that would do would be to, theoretically, I think it could be installed into the town hall and it would remove the need for the water bottles and it would be an opportunity for people to come and fill up their water bottles for clean drinking water. And Greenup Vermont is issuing, I think, 37 of these throughout the state and the grant application, which is a very simple one-page, is due in December. So, I wasn't sure if that was something that the town would be interested in, I've seen them in buildings, I know when I used to work in a corporate office, they made the shift to those and it completely, you know, removed any funding or any money that needed to be spent on water services or, you know, filtered drinking water, so.
Yeah, we can go for that and then see how much it would cost to...
Yes, you get up to, it says up to $1,000 to install it, so I'm not sure, you know, I think we would have to work out who would install it and how much it might cost and how much we might need to...
Get all the particulars, but this would be, I mean, she could certainly apply for the grant, it would be a cost-saving in the long run, I'm sure.
Is this just for towns that have municipal water?
Well, it doesn't say, but that's a good question and, yeah, basically, it's just the main solution to water bottle pollution is to reduce the use of plastic, so basically the initiative, I think it just gets plugged into the water that's in the building and then it goes through a pretty robust filtration and it's just this wall-mounted thing with a motion sensor, it looks kind of like that.
It's like the old iron pipe coming out of a wall.
That would rock, about Route 4 headed out to Killington.
Route 7 there above Shasburg.
Yeah, so, I can reach out and see, but, I don't know, I mean, I know that the town hall isn't necessarily encouraging, like, a lot of in-person walk-in traffic, but maybe someday down the road when the world isn't the way that it is now, I mean, if you're out on a walk and need to fill up your water bottle or something and going through town or...
Seems like a positive thing to...
Yeah, I mean, and it wouldn't necessarily, I mean, we could see if it would better, be better served in a different building in town or, I don't know, it just, I saw that, Deb sent that to me and I saw it come through and it seemed like a positive.
Seems like we should certainly try.
Yeah, and we can't, I mean, as we've learned, if we get, if they say that we are eligible for it, we don't necessarily have to go through with it, although we wouldn't want to take away from another community, but I thought I could.
We have no idea how much those systems cost.
Well, it probably says how much they would cost, but more than the $0 that would cost us to get it if we were awarded the grant. But I think they are quite, they're, I think that they're like around $800 per unit.
I would suspect it. I mean, if you buy a good system for your house, you've spent a couple hundred bucks on that and the filters are like 75.
It's a $1,000 grant.
No, so, it's, the grant would be to get a free unit and up, and up to $1,000 to get it installed. So, you're getting the unit and the installation, if we can find somebody to do it for under $1,000 or $1,000 or under, we get the whole, whole kit and caboodle.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, no, the whole, the whole deal. So, it would be interesting to kind of figure out how much the town spends every year on Misty Meadows.
How many, how many places get them? All three places?
No, no, I think it's just one unit.
But, no, I say Misty Meadows, is that just in the town hall or does the library get it too?
No, no.
The town hall does, doesn't it?
The road through comes down and gets...
The town garage?
So, it could potentially eliminate a third, I don't know if we have requirements of Misty Meadows, you know, things to consider, but it seems like in an effort to be a little bit more, not that this is environmentally unfriendly by any means, but it just could be something neat for the town.
Anything else? Jonas?
Since you were talking about grants, I was speaking to Gary Holloway today. Gary Holloway is the program manager for the Vermont Downtown Program. There's been $5 million allocated to new funds for not just the 23 municipalities that have designated downtown, but they are opening the grant, as I understand it, to designated village centers. So, that would include Pollet, I believe you have a designation in West Pollet as well. So, the maximum grant would be $200,000, I think the minimum is like $5,000 or $10,000. And the grant match goes from 50% to 20%. So, that announcement's not going to be out for, you've got to appear all that stuff, so, he's thinking that if you guys, any municipality has a project or projects in mind, have to keep in mind because this money has never, has not been given to village center designation, so.
Who is it through?
It's the Agency of Commerce Community Development. It's Gary Holloway, he's in charge of the Vermont Downtown Program. Anyway, that information will be out in about 30 days. If you're interested to see what types of projects they fund, you can go to the site and look up Downtown Transportation Improvement Grant and it'll give you an idea of what you're eligible for.
Great.
Thank you. Anything else under new business? Anything under public comment? Who wants to make the motion?
I will, I move that we adjourn.
Do you have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you everyone for coming tonight.